Hey, um, welcome everybody to the July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Altadena Town Council. And a special welcome back to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you.
The meeting is officially started. The time is seven oh three. First on our agenda is our flag salute. Councilmember Knapp, will you introduce our guest?
I sure will.
To the July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
If you're listening, can you please mute yourself? We just got feedback. I'm gonna do a quick mute. Hold on a second before we do the flag salute. Okay. Great. I wanted to introduce for our flag salute tonight, Angel Rodriguez. He is a rising senior at Pasadena High School. He served as class president for three years and is the newly elected student body president and pointe club president. He's also a part of the Law and Public Service Academy, member of the National Honor Society, recipient of the principal's honor roll, and an athlete on the track and field team. Angel enjoys getting involved in the community and aspires to run for public office in the future, so we are very pleased to have him here today. Angel, I will unmute you, or you can go ahead and unmute. And give us just a second. We're gonna load the flag, which is there, and you may take it away.
Thank you, Victoria. At this time, would you please put your right hand over your heart? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And thank you so much for doing that and for being here with us. And we look forward to getting reports on how, um, how you're doing at PHS and what you end up doing when you get to graduation. So thanks so much for being here.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Thank you, Angel. Okay, next on our agenda, it requires us to have roll call. Councilmember Wong, please proceed with the roll call.
Good evening, councilmembers and Altadena community. Our roll call starts with Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Thank you, Amy Lyford.
Present.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Nick Aronson.
Billy.
Present.
Thank you, Dorothy Wong. Hannah Petrie.
Present.
Thank you, Hannah. Doctor Sandra Thomas.
She's muted.
She said present.
Thank you. Chris O'Malley.
Excused.
Thank you, Veronica Jones.
Here.
Thank you, Daryl Aranda.
Excused.
Thank you, Madel-- I'm sorry, in honor of Madeline. Alan Peck.
Excused.
And just a quick note, Alan had an eight-point, his grandchild weighed eight point five pounds. A huge, beautiful baby born today.
Wow, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Plus one. Reginald Wilkins.
Excused.
Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Diane Markison.
Yeah.
Doug Cauliflower.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's everybody. So I think we're four people.
Right.
But we have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Okay, move on with one point three, which will be the approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Knapp. You're muted.
I know, I was trying to click through too many places. Good evening, fellow councilmembers and Altadena community. The Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on Tuesday, July twelfth, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting, and the agenda was circulated to you on Saturday, June sixteenth. I currently have the following changes. We are going to switch the order of the community reports. So Parks and Rec will go first and become six point one, and Altadena Library District will go next, which will be six point two. And we are going to add, under committee reports, seven dot four, a communication committee report with Chair Nick Aronson. Are there any other changes? Seeing none, I ask that we--
The DVDs are actually in there, so the company doesn't say it wasn't--
Can you guys, can everybody mute, please? I'm gonna ask that we, um, I motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second emotion.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Motion second. And are there any abstent, any, um--
All in favor?
Oh, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The agenda is set as amended.
Chair Jones, before you continue, I just want to ask the public that if you are here, uh, joining the meeting via the Zoom link, to please have yourself muted unless you are speaking. Also, there are several people, um, in the meeting that are not on the agenda. So you might be looking in chat, because I am just going to ask in case we miss someone. But I have the names of everyone that was going to present, and there's someone that has signed in from their iPhone that has no name whatsoever. So if you, you might not be able to change your screen name from your iPhone, but we just wanted you to know that I, I see that you're here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Knapp. We're moving on to our officers' report, and we start with two point one, the chair's report. That would be my report. I just wanna report, we're over halfway through the year. At the last executive committee meeting, we discussed the upcoming months. I'd like to take a moment to stress the importance of the upcoming months left in this year. There will be an election in November. We will be impacted by the results of the upcoming election. There are many important issues being placed on the ballot, including our sheriff's department, our library trustee, and PUSD board selection. The town council will be holding its election at the same time. Please plan to get involved. Consider running or serving our community by being involved in one of these organizations that are holding an election. There are several opportunities for involvement, and if you are just totally against running for election, then volunteer at a polling place, volunteer for our election committee. But don't just watch. Be a part of what makes our community. Have a say in what's happening here locally. I encourage you to get involved. Thank you. That's the end of my report. So we move on to the vice chair, chair's report. Vice Chair Knapp.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I am going to read from an article that was published in ColoradoBoulevard.net online on July thirteenth. A collaborative version of this can also be found on the town council website, and it is a in memoriam for Councilmember Barber. Members of the Altadena Town Council are still in shock at the unexpected passing of Councilmember Barber, age fifty-five, on Monday, June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Madeline, a graduate of Blair in nineteen eighty-four and of the University of Laverne, joined the council in May of two thousand and twenty-one. After a long career with Nestle and a more recent role at AIDS Healthcare Foundation, Madeline wanted to give back to the community that she and her husband Michael have called home since nineteen ninety-five. I have the great pleasure of working with Madeline on a number of projects, most recently relocating the crossing guard for Altadena Arts Magnet, repainting the existing crosswalks and adding new crosswalks at the intersection of Calaveras and Santa Rosa. In order to make the area feel safer for students and residents, Madeline was also working to install crosswalks at El Molino and Mendocino. Madeline loved that my older son attends Blair, and we often discussed her taking a renewed and more active role with the school as an alum. She wanted to make a difference to the students, hopefully in a mentorship capacity, and I looked forward to seeing her do just that, knowing that my own son would benefit from her tutelage. Madeline was a spitfire. If she said she was going to do something, she did it. She had a warm and relatable approach, something that would easily deescalate otherwise heated situations. She had excellent follow-up and follow-through, something that came in especially handy when acting as a liaison between constituents and LA County. Madeline loved her newfound role in the town council and took pride in helping others. Above that, though, she loved being a wife, mother, grandmother, and friend. Even though our time together was briefer than I ever imagined, it is the latter that I missed most now. The Altadena Town Council's hearts and prayers are still with Madeline's husband, Michael, her son Tyler, grandson Case, and the extended family as they mourn her sudden passing and navigate life without her. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Knapp. Um, and we will be, um, putting out a call to fill Madeline's seat in August. Okay, so we move on to our recording secretary, Nick Aronson.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Hi, everybody. We're back on Zoom, but it's good to see your faces safely out there. I sent out the minutes for our June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. I received no corrections. Are there any this evening? Seeing none, I move that we accept those minutes as sent.
I second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Um, one abstention.
One abstention.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, so we move on to the treasurer's report. I'll be doing that. Councilmember O'Malley is not here tonight. The council began the period from May twenty-seven to June twenty-eight with one thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and forty-seven cents. There was one deposit for ninety-five dollars. We wrote a check for thirteen ninety-nine to GoDaddy. We wrote two checks totaling three hundred and fifty dollars for the ATC tablecloths that were purchased and a hundred dollar reimbursement for ATC retreat supplies. There was a three-dollar check image fee and a twelve-dollar monthly maintenance fee that will be refunded. The, our account form fell below fifteen hundred for a minute, so they charged us, but they're gonna refund us that. Our ending balance is one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. That's the report, our finance report. We have big-time money. So, okay, so I'm gonna move on to two point five, which is our corresponding secretary's report, Councilmember Wong. Better known as Dot.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Um, so yes, we have a very exciting, uh, we've already had a very exciting beginning of July, and we have a lot of great events coming up, which you'll hear about during our meeting. And just to highlight a couple of upcoming events happening, last week, the Altadena Farmers Market has gone back into regular operation from four PM to seven PM at Loma Alta Park. So tomorrow will be their second, uh, second week back. Sam is gonna talk about Parks After Dark. And then on July twenty-second, this might be brought up as well, the Altadena mural grocery outlet anniversary dedication will be happening at the grocery outlet and an amazing Altadena mural from nine to twelve-thirty. On July twenty-third, Neighbors Building a Better Altadena will be hosting a water symposium, and that is gonna be an amazing event at Farnsworth Park. Learn again how precious water is right now. There'll be some amazing speakers. So again, that'll be the twenty-third from nine to twelve at Farnsworth Park. Obviously, concerts in the park are in full swing. Seven twenty-three from two to four will be having the History of Altadena ACAB, and you'll hear more about that as we go on. And then also on July twenty-third, from eleven to three is the Forty-First Assembly District Community Resource Fair and Block Party, hosted by Assemblymember Chris Holden. So check that out. That'll be in Pasadena. Lots of cool stuff, free hot dogs, lemonade, bounce house, live music, backpacks, car show, all kinds of fun stuff. Um, and that is all posted on the town council website. Finishing out the month will be everything I've talked about so far. So thank you for listening. If you guys have any events that you would like to have posted on the town council website, you can email me at Dorothy.Wong@AltadenaTownCouncil.org, and you can find that on the calendar page of the Altadena Town Council website. Thank you.
reports. We're gonna start with three point one, California Highway Patrol. Officer Bay or Officer Boyd?
Hi, good evening, councilmember. You guys seem, are you okay? See me okay? I miss being back in person, but Zoom is always good. And I don't know about you guys, but my, uh, my house kinda shook this afternoon with those airplanes that flew by. I don't know, I can also heard that too. So yes, Officer Bay with the Highway Patrol. I just wanted to give our, um, June statistics for our traffic collisions. So we had a total of, excuse me, twenty-two traffic collisions in the month of June. Three of those were vehicles versus bicyclists, uh, was, which resulted in three injuries. We did not have any vehicles versus pedestrians for the month of June, according to my statistics, and we had nineteen collisions involving both vehicles, uh, two resulting in two injuries, and about three hit runs, no DUI investigated, uh, traffic collisions. In regards to, um, speed trailers, uh, so right now I'm trying to deploy a speed trailer on Loma Alta in between Lincoln and Danby, just to slow down some speeders. I've noticed a lot of people walking, a lot more foot traffic and bicycle traffic, so I'm gonna try and deploy a radar trailer there. And I also had a request from the public to get a radar trailer on Calaveras Street. I'm just trying to pinpoint a good, good location for that. Myself and Officer Boyd are gonna be present, um, this Friday for the mural, so you'll see us with our, our big smiles and our tan uniforms, so feel free to, to stop by, and as well as, uh, Chris Holden's event this, I believe it's this Saturday as well. Uh, but that concludes my report. Are there any questions at all?
Officer Bay, do you have any estimate on that Calaveras speed trailer?
About, um, where--
When it might be placed?
So I, uh, I'm currently working with two-speed radar trailers right now. One is being worked on with Department of Public Works. But the thing is, they're utilizing kind of technology that's kind of in the past, so they have to kind of rummage through other radar trailers in order to fix another one. So I'm, I'm hoping I can get that deployed sometime, just realistically, probably by the end of the month, but I'll do, uh, regular, um, uh, additions and just traffic complaint, uh, where I go there in person and observe.
Thank you.
Of course.
So if I miss you, just speak up. Um, I would just like to request that on Figaroa and, um, Kenyatta, between Kenyatta and Casitas on Sunday afternoons.
Okay.
They, um, there's, you can see the tire marks in the street. They just go round and round and round for about an hour, just right there in the middle of the intersection. I know I talked to, uh, Captain Williams about it, but it's Sunday afternoon after two o'clock or so, and they do it till about four o'clock.
And these are vehicles like doing donuts or, or racing? Okay.
And I don't go outside to see. I'm, I'm further in. I'm not near the corner, so I don't go see, but the skid marks are there as soon as--
You know, I've been getting a lot of, um, complaints about a lot of traffic that's coming through with JPL. Down, I believe it's down not Casitas, uh, but maybe Windsor, but all around that area, I'm starting to get more, um, more traffic complaints, but thank you. Councilmember Jones, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and make a traffic, uh, complaint request, and then we'll, we'll do something about that.
Yes, thank you. JPL is back in session, so now the traffic started again.
Yeah.
Had it for two years. Now we have it again, but, okay, thank you for your report, Officer Bay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our Altadena Sheriff's Station. Captain Williams.
Hello there, everybody. Can you guys hear me? Just wanna make sure. All right, great. All right, so we just wanna start off, uh, I wanna start off with, uh, just a few crime stats for the month of coming up to middle of July. So our property crimes, I'm sorry, our crimes against persons, violent crimes are, are down a little bit. They're down six percent. Our property crimes in total are down eleven percent. However, our vehicle deaths from vehicles and residential burglary incidents are, are actually up quite a bit. Ones up, residential birds are up thirty percent, and deaths from vehicles are up fifty-four percent. Uh, the main thing from the vehicle deaths, deaths from vehicles are the catalytic converters. That continues to be a problem. So we'll, uh, continue to try to do enforcement and have, uh, events to tackle those type of issues. But just keep in mind, just pass on to anybody that will listen, remember to leave valuables out of the car. If you can, park cars in the garage, uh, under lit areas, things of that nature. And then I'll talk about some of the catalytic converter events we have coming up, uh, in a bit. So, uh, wildfire season, of course, is upon us, and it will last all the way through late fall. And this is California. It can go a little bit further than that. So our volunteers are gonna be doing, uh, putting together packages to put on houses along what we consider the fire line on the northern part of Altadena. So if you see these packets or see them, uh, people in our volunteer uniforms putting them on doorways, don't be alarmed. They're just trying to get packets just to make sure everybody's, uh, aware of what to do and how to prepare for if a fire does hit and comes close enough to where evacuation is already needed. Deb Haverstadd is leading that. She did a great job. It was all her idea, her plan, and she's, uh, she's running with it, so. One significant event I wanna talk about, we had a few complaints regarding marijuana dispensary on Lake. We had to wait for our narcotics bureau to become free, because of course they handle everything in the whole county that's unincorporated. And they finally got to Altadena as they promised, and today they actually served the warrant on the place. So it is shut down for now. Uh, things of significance, they arrested three people, recovered a whole bunch of marijuana edibles and actual plants and a little bit of money. We found some ammunition. We couldn't find the gun, but, uh, at least we, we got it shut down for a while. Edison came and they shut the power down for a while, so that should last. But the only issue is, you know, we, we see with these marijuana dispensaries, once we shut them down, they're, they're back up, uh, in a couple of weeks. In other areas, I was told that, uh, sometimes they'll hit them and they'll be up back the next day. So as long as we, if we keep seeing them come back up, we'll stay on them. Of course, there is something, uh, in the, but the county board supervisors is looking at to where they're gonna legalize or make it available for them to get permits for that. So until that day comes, we'll stay on top of it. A few events I wanna talk about, of course, uh, first week of August, it's August second, we're gonna have our National Night Out. That's gonna be from five to eight o'clock on that Wednesday. Yeah, I believe that's the one. And on the eleventh of August, we're gonna have another catalytic converter etching event. That's gonna be at the station. Due to the heat, we're gonna have it from seven o'clock till twelve, uh, noon. And I remember last meeting, someone was asking where to get the cages to cover the catalytic converter. So we found a spot and partnered up with them, uh, Pasadena Toyota. I've got, I'm gonna get the exact address for you. Give me one second here. So it is on three six zero zero East Foothill Boulevard. That's in Pasadena. A number to reach is, uh, seven two six, seven nine five, nine seven eight seven. And they, if you could schedule an appointment there, they can, uh, get you set up to get the cage around the catalytic converter, which is a better way of stopping or preventing people from stealing, uh, that converter. I believe that's all I have to report, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Captain Williams, this is, uh, Councilmember Knapp. I just wanted to let you know that August second, the night of National Night Out, is the Tuesday.
Tuesday, I'm sorry.
Okay, and that's when we--
Thank you so much.
It conflicts with land use, yes.
Although it's earlier this year, so five to eight versus six to nine, so.
And, uh, come out, it's all free too. Just wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
Thank you, Captain, and we'll give that information to Daryl, because he keeps getting his catalytic converter stolen.
I, I know, I wanted to--
He's parking in the same spot. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to three point three, LA County Fire. Marie--
Chair Jones, we should call for any other questions from council--
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any other questions for our captain?
I see none on the other page either.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we will move to three point three, LA County Fire, Marie Grekin.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, what, you know, before, before I begin, I just did wanna clarify, uh, one thing. The information that I had been given for National Night Out was that it was from six PM to eight PM. Is it five to eight, or is it six to eight?
It is five, five to eight.
It is five to eight, okay.
They, they wanted it at six, and I told them to start it a little bit earlier, so.
Okay, so that, that will lead into, that will lead into what I talk about after I finish my report. So for the month of June, we did have one fire in Altadena. We had a total of three hundred and twenty-two responses. Uh, one fire on Glen Avenue, which was a tree fire, uh, that got struck by lightning during a thunderstorm. So it was just confined to the tree. Um, we had two hundred and fifty-five, uh, medical calls that we responded to, and we transported one hundred and ninety-three patients from that. We had nine traffic collisions that we responded to. As a reminder, uh, there, you know, the CHP, Officer Bay talked about twenty, I believe, twenty or twenty-one traffic collisions. We, we're always probably gonna show less, because we don't respond to all of them. And also on our, um, on my report, I am showing two that were versus pedestrian. But again, we don't have a way of distinguishing between pedestrians and bicyclists. And I know he had three that were versus bicycles, so it's very possible that these two were two of the three that we responded to, and they were on bicycles. We also had a couple of, uh, gas leaks, uh, two hazmat incidents of gas leaks with no damages, and, uh, two incidents of wires down. Our safety tip of the month is, um, has to do with the heat. It's pretty hot out there. So we wanna make sure that people are staying hydrated, uh, and especially when it's extremely, extremely hot or you are exerting yourself, exercising, uh, make sure you're drinking at least two to four glasses of water each hour during those extreme times, wear lightweight, light-colored, loose-fitting clothing, uh, wear sunscreen if you're gonna be outdoors. If you're gonna be exercising, do it earlier in the morning or later in the afternoon, after dusk. Uh, and pace yourself. If you're, if you're not used to that kind of exercise and exerting yourself in that heat, don't overdo it. Make sure you get plenty of rest and that you rest in shaded areas. The other thing that I wanted to announce is that we have a new program, where, and I'm glad Captain Williams brought up wildfire season, so thank you for that. It was a great segue for me. Uh, one of the things that we are doing now is we are distributing, we are going to be distributing NOAA weather radios to residents. So we've entered into an agreement through the Office of Emergency Management with NOAA to be able to issue non-weather-related emergencies via alerts through the NOAA weather radios. And those alerts will be issued by the Office of Emergency Management in consultation with, uh, Fire and Sheriff if we have a brush fire, um, that is directly and immediately threatening a community. So it's, we're not going to break in and issue an alert over these radios for every brush start that we get, because we, we handle most of them, but if it's anywhere-- But if it's anywhere evacuations are going to be imminent or are already in progress, we're going to utilize these radios. It's just one more tool that we can use in addition to Alert LA and the media and social media to be able to alert residents of something that is happening. These radios are going to be free of charge, you do need to register to receive a radio. I did supply the council and Dot with a flyer that has a website link and a QR code for people to go ahead and get on and register. And before I leave this meeting, I will type in that website address in the chat for everybody so that they can capture it and register to receive a radio. We will be handing these radios out, we will be distributing these radios to people who pre-registered at National Night Out at Farnsworth Park, we will be there with radios. So the flyer that I have posted places says from six PM to eight PM. But now that I know it's going to start at five, I will be there at five with radios ready to distribute. So thank you for clarifying that. Again, free of charge, priority will be given to those homes that are in those foothills. You know, the the northern end of Altadena. And I I've asked, thank you, Dot, she's going to be sending out that flyer as well. And I've also asked that it be posted on the town council's website, so hopefully that can get done as well. And these are really, really good, especially as you get further and closer to the forest when you lose a lot of cell reception. These radios don't need any type of cell reception. You just plug them in at home, you just leave them plugged in and they will only squawk at you if we issue an alert. The radios will come pre-programmed with certain alerts, like, you know, flood warnings or and wildfire is in there. We will give you, when you pick up the radio, we'll give you a website links where you can see what alerts have been pre-programmed. You can go in and you can program more if you want, you can turn off ones that you don't want to receive. If all you're interested in is wildfires, you can turn off every alert but that. And they do have a battery backup system, so if you lose power, the radio will still go off. So I think I've covered everything about the radios, there is a limit of one per household. And again, register to receive the radio and then come by National Night Out and I'll have a table there and I'll be giving out the radios.
Hey, we have a question from Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Maria, for the the presentation. So so two questions, one is people were wanting to know if there will be any training that comes with the radio, like a session? Or how how would people know how to use it?
Okay, so for that question, and hopefully by August second, when we distribute these radios, we are working on a training right now with OEM. It will be a virtual training and hopefully by August second, we'll have that locked down. Our target date right now, but don't hold me to it, is August twenty-third for a virtual training. I don't know if that's going to end up being the date or not. But hopefully by the time I distribute these radios, there will be a flyer that will be handed out with the radio with information on how to log on to that virtual training. We are also going to record that training, so if you're not available for it, I will be able to send out a blast email to everybody who's registered for these radios, letting them know a link that they can go to to view that training.
Great, and then for those who aren't virtually or trained, like, I guess maybe we could do something with either map your neighborhood captains or some things to sort of, like, ultimately, we're training the trainer and then those who don't have access, maybe that would be something we would do locally with our neighborhoods. Does that make sense?
I, yeah, yeah, absolutely, and I, map your neighborhood is a great way to go with that. And I can certainly facilitate with the Office of Emergency Management to have them come out and do a, basically a train the trainer.
Okay, awesome, and then last question is, ultimately, if people can't make it, should we just forward your email? Or we'll work out some sort of B plan?
They can still. Yeah, they can still use that link to register to receive a radio even after the August second date. People can still put their information in. I do need to capture all this information because these radios were supplied to the Office of Emergency Management through a grant and we're helping them, you know, but the fire department has taken the distribution of the radios and we're doing that part for OEM. But for the grant tracking purposes, we do need to account for everywhere that we're putting these radios. So we do need to get them registered. Having said that, if somebody shows up at National Night Out and comes up to me and says, I, you know, I never, I didn't get a chance to use that link and I really want to get a radio, it's really important, I live in the hills. I'm going to give them a radio and I will just take down their information and I'll put it in the computer later to to get them registered through there. But I just do need to to track everybody who's receiving radios. This is the only distribution event that I have planned in Altadena right now. And that is not to say that if I start to get a lot of requests coming in from the Altadena area, that we don't plan another one. Maybe, you know, in September or, you know, October or whenever we need to at the community center or wherever it is for people to come and get their radios, we'll figure out a way to do that.
Thank you, Maria.
Yes, thank you, Maria. Are there any more questions for Maria? I don't see any more questions. Okay, thank you, Maria, and Amy said thank you in the chat to you, I know you.
Oh, everyone is very welcome and I and I will go ahead and put that that web address in the chat now before I leave.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our special presentations and we have Affirmed Housing. We have Shandra Harold presenting. Shandra?
Yes, good evening, Chair Jones, do you mind if I share my screen?
Sure, you can share your screen.
And the presentation will lead off with Melody Locke, our Director of Development, and then I'll take over from there. So give me one moment to share the screen, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I'll get started while Shonda pulls up the presentation. My name is Melody Locke, Director of Development at Affirmed Housing. Thank you, council members, for having us on the agenda and allowing us to provide an update on our senior apartments. I will do a quick introduction of our company and then I'll introduce some team members that are here on Zoom tonight, just here to answer questions. But they won't be making any presentations, and then I'll pass it on to Shonda to finish the presentation. So Affirmed Housing has been around for over thirty years. We only do affordable housing. We build new construction, we do rehabs for seniors, families, special needs, including formerly homeless, individuals with disabilities. And we have communities that are up and running throughout California. We have about seventy communities in operations, over fifty-five hundred units. And we have about eleven hundred in the pipeline coming online soon. And so here, again, here with us, we have our team that will be working onsite at the apartments after construction is done, and we thought it was important for them to be here tonight to answer any questions. Since they will be here, they will be onsite with the residents daily and working with them. And so, you know, we're emphasizing that we have a skilled team that will be here at the apartments daily. So we have Union Station, they will be providing services to the special needs formerly homeless individuals for the thirty-five units that we're planning to have here. We have Sarah Hopmeyer, Gabby Gardinas and Anne Miski here to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. Engage is another service provider that will be onsite. They will be providing services to all the apartments, all the tenants there. They will be providing art classes and educational classes in the community center and that will be open to anyone here. And then last, we have our property management company, Conam. Oh, and with Engage, we have Nancy Goodheart. And then with our property management company that we've used throughout California is Conam. We have Kelly Kalmar here to answer any questions later on. So next, I will pass it on to Shonda, who will provide the presentation on on the updates to this development from the last time we made a presentation.
Thank you, Melody, and thank you, Chair Jones and council members for inviting us back to provide an update. My name is Shonda Harold, I'm the project manager for Mirador, also known as Lincoln Avenue Senior Apartments. Our new community will be located at the northwest corner of Lincoln and Figaroa. You can see the map if you need to orient yourself. And the site is currently improved with a vacant vehicle service station. You may also recall during our past meetings, this was our original design that was entitled and approved. Five stories, ninety-six units on that street corner that will replace the vehicle service station. There was much dialogue back and forth and within the community about this project and that we wanted to let you know that we've made some changes. So kind of resetting the stage, again, the same project site location. We took the community's comments to heart, we worked with our architecture design team and entitlement consultants and as well as county staff to revise the design. We took the project from five stories to four stories and from ninety-six units to seventy-one units. As you can see from the image, we've also revised our color scheme to help it be less imposing on that corner. So here are, here again is the corner view of the property. This is the Lincoln Avenue frontage. And the Figaroa Street frontage. Just recapping again what Melody said and the steps we've taken to try and be better neighbors. We have reduced the height of the building, we have reduced the unit count. We did want to clarify that we have seventy-one total units, one of those is an onsite manager's unit. Thirty and all seventy units will be restricted to seniors with low incomes. Of those seventy units, thirty-five will be set aside for very low income seniors who have experienced homelessness, formerly homeless seniors. With this reduction in building and unit size, we were, we did not reduce any of the open space provided indoor or outdoor common open space, so we think that's that's good. We also did not reduce any of the parking for this project. It was just the residential units and building mass that were impacted. Want to highlight, again, just touching base on what is affordable housing. It's housing that is affordable to the people who live in it. Residents need to make sixty percent of area median income or below. And for LA County, that's approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars for a household of two persons. Residents pay thirty percent of their income towards utilities and rent. So a rent for rent in this project will range between six hundred and twenty-five dollars and just over thirteen hundred dollars just depending on the household income. And again, of the seventy units, thirty-five will be reserved for very low income seniors who have experienced homelessness. The remaining thirty-five units are general affordable units, open to any lower income senior. Again, touching base on the services that Melody introduced beginning of the presentation. Supportive services and resident services will be provided onsite at no cost to residents and will offer opportunities for residents to have support to achieve their highest level of self-sufficiency. Have lifelong learning helmet, health and wellness opportunities and provide linkages to other service providers in the community. Whatever we can do to help residents be successful and not only in their housing, but in their life, that is our mission. As far as our upcoming schedule, we're expecting to start construction at the end of the year and we would have a grand opening hopefully in the third quarter of twenty twenty-four. This concludes my presentation, Melody and I and the rest of our team are here, in case you have any questions, we're happy to answer them, thank you.
Since I just wanted to say something because I represent the census tract that this building is going in. And so we would, and I know this has been said a hundred thousand times, we would prefer a three-story building, that would be in the keeping of our neighborhood and it would show respect for our CSD. And this is coming from the census tract that's here. They believe that until profit is taken out of the equation of homelessness, the problem will not be solved. And they believe that this building is an example of profit being put before the wishes of a community. Because we have a CSD that took many years to establish. And to come in and override the CSD, and I know there's many reasons and all kinds of talk about why this needs to be and why it's okay. But it really is not okay to disrespect a community that has put forth an effort to do what is good for their welfare. So I just wanted to say that before I took took any questions, and that comes from Census Tract forty-six ten. Okay, so are there any questions? Sylvia?
I have a question, I didn't see the slide, it went kind of fast. There's thirty-five parking spaces and how many for bicycles?
Give me one minute, I can pull it back up.
Because you have seventy units and then the manager, and then thirty-five, only thirty-five parking spaces is what I saw.
That's correct, not all of our residents will have vehicles? I'm screen sharing, oh boy, excuse me. One moment, sorry, while I pull it back up.
Fifty-eight bicycle spots.
I guess my question is of the seventy, how is it determined? I mean, do you have spots for visitors as well? It just because Figaroa, you know, you have a lot of, you have businesses on Lincoln and then, you know, Figaroa has cars parked on the street. And so my question is regarding traffic and it just seems like many more units to to parking spaces and especially if visitors come.
We have Tim Moran from Irvine Associates who was guiding us through our entitlement process. Tim, can you provide some insight on the parking standards that we were required to meet?
Sure, absolutely, and hi, everyone, Tim Moran with Irvine Associates, I was the entitlement consultant, helping out with this project. So and just to clarify, I believe we have forty-three bicycle parking spaces in the the current design. It's thirty-five long-term spaces and seven short-term spaces. In terms of bike, or sorry, in terms of vehicular parking requirements for this site, because it is a hundred percent affordable project and it is providing a certain portion of supportive services, the the project site actually requires zero parking through the the county and the state regulations. So all of the parking that's being provided is above what's required and that parking was based on the demands of the project site. So as Shonda noted, there's a significant portion of the tenants that will be in this building that are not expected to have vehicles, and that's based on, you know, firms' experience in running these projects. So the parking that's provided is based on what's needed for the site.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it does. It just amazes me that the county doesn't have a requirement for parking, you know, and you have seventy, seventy residents. It just seems so low and so many bicycle spots. It, I'm just curious about that. It just seems a little odd.
It's very odd. It's very odd. What will, what I see happening is that our streets will be filled with cars. And especially, I live on a cul-de-sac. It's in overnight parking is allowed. Well, we do it, people do it. So then what you end up doing is filling up my street with cars. Because seniors do have cars and they do drive more so than ride bikes.
Yeah, I don't see, Doug and I work a lot with seniors and I don't know of any eighty-year-old seniors out riding their bikes. How about you, Doug?
And bikes are very expensive. They're, and you're, you're saying low income. I have a question from Amy. Amy would like to know who will determine the access for rentals for formerly homeless seniors versus low-income general seniors? How will those decisions be made?
I'm not sure if Con Am or Union Station, both our property manager and our service provider are involved in the lease-up process. So Kelly or Union Station?
Sure. So me, hi, by the way, thank you for having me. Happy to answer any questions that you guys have regarding a property management aspect for the community. The, the way that we, we break things out is there is a coordinated entry matching program that we work with, with our service provider to identify folks that qualify for the formerly homeless age requirement and needing those services. And so that is how those applicants are identified. And then we do our screening to make sure that they meet the income qualification and and then are move into the, the community in terms of our, the rest of our low-income seniors that are looking for housing. What we do is we will put out an interest list and advertise that information. Get folks to come on board and then we'll work through an interest list into a waiting list as the time comes closer and go through the process of of meeting with those applicants in the order that they have applied, determine eligibility and move them in.
This Diane, do, do you not have, do you not have a department in the county that works with you? Identifying folks?
We do.
Okay.
We do. And so for folks that are, are getting assistance and are matched through that, we work in partnership with them as well. And so all of that we go through in the initial lease-up process to determine eligibility, that they qualify and rental assistance. So it's a coordinated effort really from the supportive services agency in the county and the property management group.
Right. I guess I'm just wondering what the supportive services group, I don't know, I thought you had to do it all through the county. Which then the county would be looking out for the county people. That's all. I, just a question. I guess you do both.
Yeah, it's, it's really a dual effort there with them in partnership because they are getting assistance from the county and, but we also have a service provider that provides matches and helps them, helps those applicants through the process.
Okay, you don't have some percentage that you have to get through the county then? Is that right?
There are thirty-five. You want to take that, Shonda?
Yeah, I'll take it. We do. So there's thirty-five units that are set aside for low-income seniors that have experienced homelessness. And it's those residents of those thirty-five units that will be working through the coordinated entry system to find matches.
With the, with the county.
With the county, correct, with the county.
Thank you. I knew there had to be a piece of, thank you.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Hey, any more questions?
Sure, it's Victoria. I have a question from Amy in the chat and then I have my own question. Her question was relative to how are the applicants informed of the opportunity? And how wide is there a marketing effort or how wide is that marketing effort? Does it go beyond the partners that you have in this for the other units? Or you will be selecting applicants via communication via these, these partners?
Ellie, would you like to speak to speak to that also, the marketing of the general affordable units?
Sure. So we do publicize through a couple of different resources for the units that are, are not matched through the county. We have our, our normal affordable housing marketing platforms, apartments.com, things of that, that nature. Affordable housing websites. We list that on our own website. The firm also does as well. And we in the past have partnered with cities. Some cities have had us go on and there have been publications to do announcements. If there is a channel, any type of, of announcements in order to get the word out to the, to residents that would qualify for the project and get them informed with the interest list and getting their name on there so that they can be updated on, on construction as it comes closer. And then the application process as it comes closer.
And then my question was around, and maybe Tim can answer this. But generally speaking, I know this will bypass the land use committee for which I sit on. Are you subject to environmental impact reports and/or traffic studies? I think that that would possibly alleviate some of the concerns. Certainly whenever a new business goes into an existing site here in Altadena, those two together, especially where traffic is concerned and especially where the closer we are to entrances to the freeway, to allaying some of the concerns about not only street parking, but traffic in the general area.
Tim, if you'd like to take that.
Sure. So yeah, so again, this, this project being a supportive housing project is using Assembly Bill twenty-one sixty-two, which is one of the state bills for housing, as you know. And per AB twenty-one sixty-two, the project is exempt from secret review. So there's no mandatory secret review, but I know that, and Shonda, I don't know if you want to speak to any of the initial analysis, but typically there is analysis done on the project site regardless of the secret requirement.
Yes, I mean, there is federal money involved, so we did do a NEPA review. I do also want to clarify too, that the project is fully entitled and has, has already been approved. So just wanted to provide that little bit of clarification also.
If I, if I may just add something because I've heard the concern about parking. And I will say that there are literally hundreds of this type, these types of buildings. And they've studied parking and it is not an issue. For example, we run a building in Pasadena that has over a hundred and forty residents. And maybe two or three of the people have automobiles. This is a population that does not have cars. You're not going to have a lot of visitors with cars. And I'm not saying there won't be any, but I really honestly do not think this is something anybody needs to worry about because this has been shown through, you know, countless examples. They've studied how many parking spots these kinds of buildings need. So I just want to alleviate people's fears on that issue.
Well, I would beg to differ with that if we go over to West Hollywood and see some other places. I mean, I'm sure we can find some that don't have problems, but we do definitely have some that do have problems. So, okay, we have Billy and then we're going to have to move on after Billy.
Also Councilmember Wong.
Oh, okay. So we'll do.
Those would be the last two.
Okay. Billy Malone, Councilmember Billy Malone. Can you unmute yourself?
Sorry, I, I just want to make two comments. I understand that the building is by right. But one of the things I want to mention, which Veronica did start off with is for, you know, our community has been around for a hundred years or so. Every single resident, every single developer, every single business owner, every single commercial, every single person for a hundred and something years has abided by the regulations. The our buildings do not go more than three stories. So having an outside developer come in, even if it's by right to go through the state to do it, it's like a slap in the face to everybody who's done the right thing and applied for permits to build their building. So I know that you say you're doing it by right, but you have to realize it's a slap in the face to every single person that lives in Altadena that's followed the regulations up to this point. The next thing I want to mention, you keep, they're talking about the parking and you mentioned that, you know, with these residents don't have parking. But every time I look at this building, I'm like, but it's not near a major transit corridor. You're talking about homeless people who have transit issues or are transit impaired. And yet you're putting it up in northwest Altadena. You mentioned the building in Pasadena that has a hundred and forty units. You don't have an issue. Of course you don't. Because it's within transit corridors. This is a building that is northwest Altadena. It's way away from any major transit corridors. And it's going to make it very difficult for the residents to travel from there to other places. And if you set up some kind of shuttle, shuttle system. So I, I, I'm just saying, it looks to me like even though this looks like a good development and even though we all agree we need more affordable housing, that in this particular project, it was just a case of let's find the cheapest piece of land we can. Let's get the state to help us build it regardless of location and regardless of the community is in, and let's just do it. And, and I think everybody kind of feels offended by that, although we all support the affordable housing. That's it.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Exactly. That's exactly how we feel. Thank you. And we go on to Councilmember Wong and then we're going to have to move on to our next item.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones, Chair Jones. So I, I there's a lot obviously to think about because we feel like we don't have control. And yet there are definitely projects in our community nearby that were put in that has now, that has actually amounted to traffic injury collisions and fatalities. So I'm, me, even someone who's a real advocate for mobility, am somewhat concerned about this particular intersection. But my question is, I don't know if you said it, age, what is the age range for the seniors? And then the other one is, what, is there sort of a maximum occupancy? Because at the end of the day, we're all aging in Altadena as well. And I see a lot of homes being sold because there's only a senior resident now. And then our own seniors then don't have somewhere to go as easily. So, you know, there's a lot of issues here. I also, as a mobility advocate myself, would be concerned about how you got the data for what parking and what bicycle parking it's put in. And then also just climate, you know, the impact that I see Heat Island effect. You know, or just how is this building going to reduce its impact on the community? So at the end of the day, can you just let me know what the age is, the age range is, and if there's a capacity for the units?
Yeah, I can share. The seniors are fifty-five and fifty-five plus. And as far as capacity units, I need to just confirm and ask Kelly to confirm for studio, one bedrooms, what the typical capacity is for those.
Is generally two for the studios and three for the one bedrooms. But for, as for senior, they all have to be age restricted. And so that generally leaves it to one or two is what we have seen in our other communities.
Okay, thank you for that. We are going to move on. I would probably ask that affirmed housing meet with Census Tract forty-six ten and let them ask their questions, even though you're going in by right and you don't have to listen to anything we say. It's still just polite to maybe talk to them, the forty-six ten, and I can set that up. So I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we're going to move on to Chap Care. We have Bianca Gonzalez and Magdalena Prado.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Let me go ahead and share my screen real quick. By any chance, are you guys able to hear me okay? I have my, my mask on, so I know that I can sound a little muffled when I have it on. Great. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, fantastic. All right, thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for, for having me and my team this evening. My name is Bianca Gonzalez and I am the Outreach and Enrollment Manager here at Chap Care. So just a little background information on me. I've been with Chap Care now for a little over eight years. I've done all sorts of work within the organization. So everything from community outreach to health insurance enrollment and case management work. And I'll let Magdalena and Siamara actually introduce themselves real quick. Magdalena, if you want to go next.
Hi, hello, good evening. Thank you so much for having us. Some of you have met me already out in the field. I'm Magdalena Prado. And my mandate is to get the word out about Chap Care and the services that we do in our community.
Hi, my name is Siamara. I've been with the company for about four years now. I started doing financials and insurance enrollment. But I just recently moved to community outreach and I'm excited to get to know all of you.
All right, thank you. Fantastic. All righty, so let's just jump right into the presentation. So Chap Care, we are a nonprofit federally qualified health center out in the Pasadena area. But we also have other clinics throughout the San Gabriel Valley. So we have been in business now for over twenty years and we do provide primary and preventative care services to, to the community as a whole. And here are our mission, vision and values. So our mission, we provide excellent, comprehensive and innovative healthcare that is accessible to all residents of the San Gabriel Valley. But I will say it's not just the residents of the San Gabriel Valley, but all those that work in the San Gabriel Valley and also come and play in the San Gabriel Valley, right? As far as our vision, we believe in healthy people building strong communities. So Chap Care is a very community-based, community health center. So we do care very much about being out in the community, doing outreach and attending community events and really educating community members on best practices on how to best take care of themselves so they can live a longer and healthier life. As far as our values, we believe in mutual respect, so treating people the way we want to be treated. Excellence and compassion. So I'm very happy to say that our providers do take the time to truly connect with patients and go far and beyond when it comes to their healthcare needs. So we work with several providers and I'm happy that they're, to say that they're all of good quality, right? As far as our services here, so we provide family medicine, so everything from prenatal care all the way to adult general medicine. But aside from our medical services, we do provide dental, vision, behavioral health services. And we do have a full functioning pharmacy, which I will say is, is very impressive for a community health center. Not too many community health centers can say that they have a full functioning pharmacy. Really, in truly places that have a full functioning pharmacy would be organizations like Kaiser, which I have Kaiser Insurance and I'll say as a patient, I do find it as, as a perk that I'm able to access a pharmacy. uh as as a perk that I'm able to access a pharmacy at any Kaiser site that I go to. Um, but also get my medications mailed to me. And that is something that we do provide our Chap Care patients with. Um, so the moment that they are done with their visit with a provider, they're able to pick up their pharmacy or I should say their medication at our pharmacy. Um, but also if they're not able to do that, we can get their medications mailed to them. Um, so I thought that was really impressive um when Chap Care implemented a full functioning pharmacy. Um, but we also provide um COVID-related services. So we do provide COVID testing and vaccination. So to date, uh, we have administered over ten thousand nine hundred COVID shot uh to adults, uh, which is quite a lot. And we do uh provide COVID vaccination to children um ages five and up. And we are in the process in providing a COVID shot to children six months and up pending if we are able to get the vaccines in um by August first. So we'll keep everyone posted on that. Um, and as far as our COVID testing, we do provide them um every Friday for adults at our Fair Oaks location. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as the presentation goes on. Um, and health insurance enrollment services. Uh, so our community outreach team um actually has certified enrollment counselors. So we do have a team who are experts when it comes to all things health insurance enrollment. So that does include uh Medi-Cal enrollment and advocacy work. So we do um help community members enroll into Medi-Cal programs, but also do the troubleshooting for them. So let's say they come across an issue with their coverage, we're able to troubleshoot that for the patient. That way they don't have to do it themselves. Um, we understand that navigating the healthcare system can be pretty challenging for some. So we do, you know, go go that extra step in in helping them to resolve those issues. Uh, we also do uh Cover California enrollment. So if you're not eligible for, let's say, a Medi-Cal program, um, and you are eligible for a Cover California plan, if that's the route that you want to take, we can actually help you with that process. Um, and we do help uh with Medicare-related enrollment services as well. So there is a lot that we do. As far as um access to providers. Um, so because we do have a chain of of community health centers throughout the San Gabriel Valley, this does make it quite easy for our patients to access care. Um, not only in Pasadena, but also in the Almani, South Almani and Manobia area. So let's say you need to see a provider right away. Uh, chances are we will be able to accommodate you to see a provider at any of our sites. Um, so if you typically uh like to go to a clinic in Manobia, but you're really ill and you wanna see a provider today, we can probably accommodate you at one of our Pasadena um clinic sites. So that is um also a perk that we have. And then as far as our services, um, to date, we have serviced almost half a million uh patients uh to date. Uh, so that is a lot of people and uh these are patients that are coming to us for not just general medicine, but also specialty care and COVID-related services. Um, so uh the people that are coming to see us um live throughout the San Gabriel Valley, uh, but also um just in LA County in general. And here are some uh pictures of our Pasadena clinic site. Um, so our Lincoln facility that you'll see right here is closest to Altadena. Um, so this is considered our pediatric clinic site. Um, but we do provide um vision and dental services for adults. So the general medicine portion is is what's more tailored to pediatrics, so children. But if you wanted to access dental services and vision services for an adult, you're able to do so at our Lincoln facility. Um, here we have our Delmar Clinic site. It's also general medicine and really focused on all things women's health. Um, so this is where a a uh mother-to-be can access an OB-GYN and and really get her annual visits done there. Um, our Fair Oaks Clinic site is our mothership. So this is our um very first clinic actually that we opened up several years ago, almost twenty years ago. Um, and here's what we administer uh the COVID um testing on Fridays. So this is where you could access that. But over at our Lake facility, uh, we do uh COVID testing every day and we work in collaboration with Opta Medical Group. Um, so that's what we predominantly do at that site currently. And here are just some pictures of our Almani, South Almani clinic site. Um, so our PEC facility is probably our biggest clinic out in the Almani area. And we do provide dental services there um as well. Uh, over at our South Almani site here at Baco, uh, we're working with Opta Medical Group as well to provide the COVID testing there. And we have our Garbi facility right here. And then right here is our Manobia Clinic site. Um, so we predominantly service uh patients for general medicine, but we do provide um vision services there as well. And then as far as our goals, uh, we actually have several goals that we want to accomplish here at Chap Care. But the number one goal for for our department specifically, so for our community outreach department, um, it's really to start uh working more with the community and connect with uh stakeholders and really start doing more um community work. Um, during the pandemic, because everything was shut down, we were not able to go to as many community events, let's say, or just do in-person services um for health insurance enrollment, for example. So this is something that we're working towards um changing. So I'm very happy now that we got the green light to be more active out in the community now that things have slightly improved uh with with the pandemic. Um, so so we are really looking uh to work more with partners. Um, so a a new relationship that we just built is with the Altadena Library. Um, so I'm very happy to say that we're going to be rolling out um in-person enrollment services at the Altadena Library and Bob Lucas Library in mid-August. Um, so we haven't done enrollment in person in over two years. So this is a really big, really big deal for us that we're able to do this uh with in collaboration with the Altadena Library. Um, so we're really excited about that. And I'm going to go ahead and let uh Magdalena actually talk a little bit more about um some of our goals and vision as far as uh working more with the Altadena community.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Bianca. Well, as some of you have, some of you have already met me out in the community, Magdalena Prado, and um we're really excited, really excited to be at this place in history where we can come out and uh continue to collaborate with our neighbors and partners. I I think first and foremost, our our vision, it it has not changed. It is to continue to forge the relationships that we've had in the past and we want to continue to bring in um new and prospective um citizens and residents and so forth and provide them with quality care. One of the things that I found in my short tenure here is that the more that I am out in the community, the more I realize that the community really is empowered and knowledgeable about Chap Care and they are actually educating me about the history of Chap Care in the community. I've heard people tell me their their grandchildren came to Chap Care. Their staff went to Chap Care for vaccine testing during the pandemic. Or, you know, they got laid off and and now they're starting a new job or starting a gig and, you know, relying on Chap Care for healthcare. So we want to continue to be that partner. You're gonna be seeing a lot of us in the community. And we're really excited to be your primary care provider. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Magdalena. Um, so this concludes our our formal presentation. Happy to take any questions if if anyone has any.
Can you um stop sharing your screen so we can see everybody? Yours.
Oh, let me see how I can stop sharing my screen. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? No. Okay, thank you for that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one question. Um, I I was at the Mariposa Junction uh block party and there was a vendor selling an excellent cookie. And there were samples over by the food truck. And I don't remember the name of that vendor. So if somebody can send that information to me, the cookie distribution, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, that's Alan Peck. It's, yeah, Alan Peck. It's called Sweet. What's what's his business?
We can get it to her. We'll email it to her. No worries.
It's for Alan. He's our council member. Okay, all right.
Magdalena, I actually have a question. How will you um do outreach for the local Altadena residents?
Well, to date, we tomorrow, you'll see us at the Altadena uh Farmer's Market. Um, Friday, you'll be seeing us in Pasadena at the Robinson Park. They have a vaccine clinic for clinic for kids and a movie night. Saturday, you'll be seeing us at Chris Holden's uh Resource Fair. I'd like to be a presence um and as many community events as possible. Uh, I love Altadena. I I shop in Altadena. And um I'm really excited to be a part of Altadena. And and I would take um suggestions and recommendations. If you know where people congregate, we wanna be there. We're at a different place in the pandemic and we really need to capture this opportunity to be able to be outdoors. Um, I know I'm enjoying my job probably more so than I would have three years ago. I love being out and I love being with people. So invite us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you might wanna talk to Captain Williams about um the um family night out. So, okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move along now and we're going to um zip through this second half of our meeting. Okay, we're gonna um, the agenda was changed to put uh Parks and Rec, Sam Estrada. Sam? Sam going once?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry. I agenda, you had me after the uh.
Now we changed.
We moved you at the top of the meeting.
Okay, all right.
Did we move that whole section or do we have general public comment now?
Yeah, cuz there was general public comment.
Okay, you're absolutely right. That's my trying to rush through the agenda. I'm sorry. I I missed general public comment and we do have some general public comment that um Councilmember Wong is going to read into the record.
Uh, yes, thank you very much. So I'm gonna, can you hear me? Hello? Okay, I'm gonna read into public record right now. Um, two public comments uh and um looks like it, I don't have a name there. So I'll, there are two public comments, maybe to remain anonymous. Uh, so this one is a public comment regarding the individual who had petitions to alter leash restrictions. I live in Census Track forty-six-ten. I walk my neighborhood, also the JPL Canyon. I usually walk early in the morning. I have been witness to five dog bites and one incident where a dog owner was letting their two dogs run leash-free and eventually going after a small dog on a leash with unfortunate results. On many occasions, I've seen dog owners along the JPL access road take their dogs off the leash while walking or bicycling. Leash laws are there for a reason. Please be respectful or choose to go to dog parks. Thank you. And then this next one is from Alonso Edwards for Affirmed Housing. Uh, his comments and questions are, what contingency plans are in place to address traffic and congestion on the corner of Lincoln and Figaroa? And the other is, number two, in the event parking exceeds the number of spaces allocated, what plans are in place to address overflow parking? And then the third uh comment question is, what plans are in place to address public safety? And uh, we'll stop at that. That that concludes our public comment.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to our community reports. Sam?
How you doing? All right, so I'll make it brief. Um, we do have a lot going on though at in the Altadena area uh at Loma Alta Park. We're currently running our esteem camp for um the youth ages six to twelve years old. It's Monday through Friday from nine AM to four PM. Um, this week, we're working with the kids on paleontology. Next week, we'll be engineering for the following two weeks. Uh, the program concludes on August uh eighth, I'm I'm sorry, on August nineteenth. And we'll be doing a community science and E is for environment through those uh two weeks. Um, enrollment is full. However, we are betting the uh the waitlist as some parents uh may still wanna get in and as we've had some parents drop out of the program. So it is a free program that's sponsored by the fifth district. So we're uh greatly appreciative of that. Um, we also have Parks After Dark at Loma Alta Park. It's Thursday, Fridays and Saturdays from six PM to ten PM. Uh, we have concerts, we have movies, we also have free food and uh surprises for the for those that attend. Like, we have currently, we've been having uh raffle prizes. Um, we've also been doing free um giveaways for those that do attend. Um, we're also having a vaccination clinic at Loma Alta during Parks After Dark. Um, and they are vaccinating children. So it is a and it is free for those that come. It's every Thursday, Friday and Saturday. And it is offered um during the at Loma Alta. It's in the, if you come to the park, it will be in the uh the patio area right in front of the gymnasium. Um, so they'll be there this Thursday. So I know so lucky, we've been getting a lot of people calling about it cuz a lot of their kids have been getting vaccinated and they're coming up on their second shot. So um, come stop by Loma Alta this the these last couple of weeks. Um, last day will be on August fifth, I'm sorry, August sixth. Um, and so this upcoming uh July twenty-eighth, we have Sam Estrada and Keith Bradford performing. And then we have Michael Haggins closing out on August fourth. Um, then on the twenty-second, we have Back to the Future. And then on August fifth, we'll be showing Space Jam with Michael Jordan. Um, so you can feel free to call Loma Alta to get more information. Um, but it's a great event and we'll be uh looking forward to seeing everybody come out. Uh, we have great resources um that we're providing. This actually, this Thursday will be the Resource Fair at Loma Alta and we'll be having us free snow cones for those that come out. Um, the Loma Alta pool uh is open. We do have minimum days that we are open, Thursdays, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays from twelve-thirty to two. Thursdays and Saturdays, they're open uh also from six forty-five to seven thirty. And Fridays from six PM to seven thirty. Uh, the they are offering aquatic aerobics and that's Thursday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays from for one hour from eleven to twelve PM. And you register every month and there is a fee. Uh, also, there's swim lessons on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. The times depend on the level for registration. Registration dates, the next one that is upcoming is on July thirtieth at eight AM. Um, so you can also call Loma Alta Park for more information about the pool. Um, I know it's not open all the time, unfortunately. Um, that is due to a low uh in in, I'm sorry, low employment by department, but unfortunately, um, but we are offering the services on those days. Um, we also have a girls' lacrosse clinic that's coming up. Registration begins on August first first and it's for ages twelve and up. The cost is free and the clinic will be on August twelfth. So we're looking forward to hosting that at Loma Alta Park. Um, we will be starting our Tiny Top Program at Loma Alta next in next month. So it's going to be ages three to five. Registration is free. So please be sure to start registering your child. Um, we're happy to bring this program back and it's fully funded. So um, we're happy that we're getting the the federal funding grant to have this program again. So if you're looking to have uh your child enrolled in a in a wonderful program, uh, please check out the site, go to Loma Alta to register your child. Again, it's for ages three to five and it'll be Monday through Thursday from nine AM to twelve PM. And the session's gonna start August. We're just waiting on the official date. Um, but we'll provide that once it's available. Um, anybody that's looking to register for any programs, you can visit parks.lacounty.gov forward slash reserve. And you can register for any classes. That's both at any of the county parks as well as our aquatic centers, as well as our contract class programs. Uh, and those that are are aware, I did mention uh the Parks After Dark. It's gonna go through August sixth. It's every Thursday, Friday and Saturday from six to ten PM. Um, we are offering a a survey for those that do attend. Um and we do offer free um giveaways for those that do complete the survey, so that just helps us provide uh funding for this program. So it's great that we're able to offer it uh in this time um of a great need for the community. And then uh over at Farnsworth, we do have the Summer Concert Series, and so I know that they'll mention that in the upcoming. But it's a, it's a wonderful concert series that we're happy to bring back. Um and also, we're looking forward to a wonderful rest of the year for our summer for this concert series. And then lastly, we do have the um playground at Farnsworth Park that is uh is basically almost complete with con- construction. And so we're happy to have that um completed hopefully by the end of August, uh early September. But it's it's looking great and we're excited to have the community uh be part of it and see the new apparatuses that will be um up and running for everybody in the LA County. And so we're also excited to see it um see it finished as it's uh went by pretty fast, but it's been a long process. Um and then pretty soon, we'll be having a new playground area as well at Charles White, so that's upcoming as well. So we're excited for the new, these new changes for the community. Um it's a long time coming, but at the same time, it's a, it's good times for the Parks and for Altadena. So, thanks.
Move on to the Altadena Library District. I see Brim here, but I don't see, um I was told Ashley was going to be here, but I guess Brim. Is that right, Brim?
Hi, uh I I'm Bryn Wall. I'm with the marketing um for the library and I will be representing the library this evening. And let me share my screen. Can you see my screen? I'm sorry, are you seeing it?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I will be brief. Um first of all, we are looking forward to the Board of Trustees election. We will have three seats up in November. Two will be trustees who will serve a four-year term and one trustee will serve a two-year term on an unexpired seat. Candidates can file nomination documents starting uh this past Monday until August the twelfth at five PM. And the, they can find the, all of the information as well as a, some tips and um uh advice from our current trustees on our website. And then all of the documentation is available on the lakvote.gov site. Moving on, um just an update on the special tax lien. The special tax that was Measure Z will appear on the October twenty-two property tax bill. The deadline to file for very low income exemption has passed. That had to have been postmarked by June the thirtieth. If anyone has any questions regarding the special tax lien, they can feel free to contact our director, Nikki Winslow, or NBS, the district's municipal advisory firm. A quick update on the building projects. We are still in the design process for the Bob Lucas branch. We are currently working with LA County Planning on a conditional use permit process for Bob Lucas. We are also performing sequoia and historical studies on both library buildings. And part of the, we're kind of delayed at this stage is due to S, cost estimates that have been rising over the past two years. We applied for a California State Library Grant and we are waiting to hear back on that. And we are hoping to get additional funding from that, which will give us more opportunities for uh updates to make the main library in Bob Lucas. We are wrapping up. We're in the last ten days of our summer reading and activity challenges at the library. We have four challenges actually this summer going. Um the baby toddler early literacy, which is basically read and log twenty-four books to earn prizes and enter a raffle. We still have a couple of programming um events going on this week and next week in the, for the uh young children. And we have four uh storytimes going on, as well as we have a toddler free play, which involves water plate bubbles next Friday. And we are very much looking forward to that and we hope to have a great turnout for that. We actually had quite a bit of fun at our last uh free play at the end of June. We are also still running the pre-K through sixth grade reading challenge where children are encouraged to sign up and they complete seventeen badges. Uh some of them are a five-hundred-minute reading requirement and then there's some additional badges, like a cooking badge, an arts badge, crafts um that they can participate in to complete the program, collect a prize and be entered in a raffle. We do have some additional summer programming for this age group as well. This Thursday, we will have African drummer Chaz Ross at Charles White Park. That of course is free. And it will be, I believe, at three-thirty in the afternoon on Thursday. We have a summer crafting program this Saturday. And we have an Explore the Galaxy program that I believe registration is full on that. I think we hit that quota today. But that is at Bob Lucas Library tomorrow and we probably still have some spots available if anyone's interested. We continue to do the Reading Buddies, that is teen volunteers working with uh young readers at the Main Library Weekly. This is every Wednesday afternoon. And we are also having a stuffed animal sleepover at the Main Library on Friday, July the twenty-ninth, with animal pickup and breakfast on Saturday, July thirtieth. We have a teen summer service volunteer challenge. So for every five hours of volunteer, volunteer service, teens can get um swag as well as this qualifies for school community service hours. We have additional programming still this month, the Teen Gardening Club and Teen Leadership Council, as well as we have a Teen Anime Club and Art Lab Studio Hours that's been happening on a weekly basis. And those will close out at the end of next week. Uh we also have Teen Laser Tag and just a few spots left open. This is after hours at the, at the library this Friday from six-thirty to eight PM. We also have a summer adult reading or activity challenge and people can, it's still not too late to sign up. Um you're just gonna have to read a lot of, a lot of minutes in the next ten days. We also have additional programming. There will be a community scavenger hunt at Main that will take place next week. Tomorrow night, we are offering a murder mystery at the Main Library and we will have a JPL um scientist discussing Rising Seas at the Main Library next Tuesday. I believe that's at six-thirty on July twenty-sixth. Our big finale will be happening not this coming weekend, but the following weekend. For adults, there'll be a performance by Susie Hansen Latin Band on Friday, July twenty-ninth, from seven to nine PM at the Main Library. We're looking forward to a pretty large turnout for this. This is a very popular band that we've had at our uh second Saturday concerts before. We are doing a performance for children of The Three Little Pigs. That'll be by Noteworthy Puppets. That is on Saturday, July thirtieth, from one-thirty to two-thirty at the Main Library. And after the performance, there will be a frozen treat that people can um pick up in the parking lot as well. And to support and say thank you to all of our teen volunteers, we are doing a teen rap party on Saturday, July thirtieth as well, from two to four PM. And there'll be games, crafts, prizes, photo booth, karaoke and treats. Just to quickly wrap things up, we are so excited to have a new artist in residence at the Altadena Library. Local botanical printer Linda Luminardi was awarded a a grant, a grant. And that will enable her to teach botanical printing and natural dyeing at Altadena Library for the coming year. It's a year-long residency and she'll be offering classes from August twenty-two through July of next year. We have already filled up the first two sessions, which are August and September. And we will be opening up October in the coming weeks for registration. But there's been a lot of great feedback and we're really excited about this program. Finally, um working with Altadena Rotary to promote the concerts in the park uh which happened from obviously July ninth through September the tenth. And we are also looking to promote any other programs. Um there's a number of ways. You can email me the flyer at news@altadinalibrary.org. Different community uh organizations are welcome to add their own events to our community calendar. And people can also sign up to receive the Altadena Connections newsletter that we send out about every two weeks um on our website as well. And that concludes um my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, I just, uh, all that amazing programming is just been wonderful. So I just wanted to give kudos uh to the nature hikes that were also led uh in the month of June. They were really amazing, awesome and brought together a lot of community members. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We really enjoyed that programming as well and I can't give any details, but you could, I think you can expect some similar programming in the future too.
Hey, thank you. Any more questions?
Um I just wanted to say, uh, this is Amy Lyford. Um I just wanted to say uh regarding the Main Library reconstruction, it and the, the changing, you know, nature of the costs. It might be worth communicating with the Getty Research Institute because they have a lot of um material about the Main Library there in their archive. And they have money. Um and I just want to thank you for um alerting us to the situation with the tax lien and how things are moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Very, I love them. Okay, we're gonna move on and we have Dr. Sandra Thomas for the Chamber of Commerce. We can't hear you. You're muted.
I didn't do it, Veronica. Doing it by itself. Greetings, everyone. Greetings, Madam Chair. Um uh and to my fellow council members. Um it's a privilege again to be with you and to um be be here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. Um as most of you've heard me say before, the only reason for the chamber's existence is so that we can serve the businesses in Pasadena, Altadena and around the s- the the communities. Well, we got some exciting news coming up. It's exciting to us. Um and I'm gonna try to share a couple of things with you. On this Friday, July the twenty-second, we will host the Greetings from Altadena Mural. And we're going to do their ribbon cutting. Um and along with celebrating Grocery Outlet's first anniversary. So it's, we're gonna, we're gonna have a lot of fun. It's going to be from nine to twelve. Hope all of you can come out. We plan to have a lot of fun. One thing that we want to do is we want to take a historical picture of, I've never seen a pic- picture that everybody in Altadena will have an opportunity to be on. So we want to take that historical picture. We've been asked to do that and so we're, we're, we are going to do that and we would like to have all of you on that picture if you can, can possibly make it that day. Okay, let's see. Um on August the ninth, from six-thirty to seven, uh we will have a sip and serve tennis mixer uh hosted by Baden's Tennis Academy at Loma Alta Park. Um in October, we will have the Business Mixer hosted by Outward Bound Adventures and a state-of-the-state power breakfast with Assembly Member Chris Holden. So we, I have a few things co- coming up and then in December, you already know, we're going to have our sip and shop holiday celebration uh there at the Mariposa Junction. As you can see, we try to continue to present um things that we know will fit our diverse community. So we look forward to seeing all of you. If you have time, please stop by our events. And if you want to know more about them, please check out the website. So in closing, I'd like to thank all of you for listening and Madam Chair, it's back to you, back to you.
And thank you, Dr. Thomas, and thank you. I'm glad to see that you're getting better. We're, we are.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to ACAB cauliflower.
ACAB, just one announcement on uh this Saturday from two to four. We are, uh the tenants at the community center are hosting an open house and the official unveiling of the new exhibit in the um lobby area. It's fourteen decades of Altadena. It's um, I'm, I will not do it any justice by trying to explain the details, so I'm uh uh hopefully I'll encourage everybody to come out and and visit us, but it's a, it's a great display, great exhibit, uh historical uh exhibit uh for our community. Um the event, I think I said two to four. Um and we will have some music. We will have light hors d'oeuvres and snacks and beverages. Um it is free, so bring your friends and family and come out and visit. Um get acquainted with the community center if you're not. Um and just enjoy some camaraderie with uh with some fellow community members. And that's all I have to report. And if I missed anything or anybody has any questions, I'll happy to answer them.
Yeah, and Doug, you didn't do it justice. The um exhibit.
I know, that's why I, you're right.
The exhibit is amazing. It's amazing. It's a, a tree, the, the, it's amazing. You need to come and see the exhibit. And we, there's going to be of live music. It it's a, it's going to be really um something that hasn't been done at that center before. So it's really good.
It will be a very nice event. I I agree. So please come out and join us and just stop for just a few minutes if that's all you have, but you'll enjoy it for the United States.
It's worth it. It's very much worth. Okay, we're gonna move on to community reports. Oh, sorry. No, no, that's not right. I forgot. Nick, I'm sorry. Nick, six point five, Nick Barnes and.
Nope, nope, he's the next, he's the next section after uh, we are moving on to.
Okay, when you guys change things, you really confuse me. You know that, right?
Sorry.
Okay.
Community Committee Report, Safe Streets.
Okay, we're going on to Community Report, Safe Streets. Seven point one, Safe Streets, Dorothy Wong.
Thank you. Sorry, I was just catching up to to all of that. Uh so thank you, uh Chair Jones. So just give you a quick update on uh things that are going on or have happened. Um so really just kind of writing them down in your calendar in case you want to get involved. Our next uh Safe Streets Committee meeting is Thursday, July twenty-eighth and um at seven PM and we're meeting virtually. Uh our last um Safe Streets meeting, we had, uh we had um Metro Los Angeles uh provide information on the update uh for the active transportation plan, which is a framework uh for mobility, active transportation. Uh and it's a countywide plan. Uh so they are definitely looking for community input from Altadena uh to provide uh regarding active transportation. And that is uh again a framework. So us in Altadena, we would want to have an active transportation plan. So that's something, uh we have a recorded presentation. So if anybody wants to see that, I can post it on the website or you can ask, but that's what happened at the last meeting. This meeting coming up on seven-twenty-eight. We are gonna be talking a little bit about Clean Air Day and Walk to School Day, which will be October fifth. And uh in that timeframe, we're hoping to engage uh as many of our schools in our community to think about um walking or biking to school on Clean Air Day. And um there's also gonna be a meeting to talk about whoever wants to join. It's not a Safe Streets meeting. It's just uh community members are organizing just to talk about what can we do in Altadena uh for Clean Air Week, which would be October first through October the eighth. Um so we're meeting. So we're meeting at Cafe Leche. If anybody wants to come Monday at 9:00 AM, this coming Monday. And then at our August meeting, we're going to get our update from the Altadena Train the Trainer event we had. So that'll be our August meeting on the 25th. So basically, our Safe Streets meetings are the 4th Thursday at 7:00 o'clock. And so California Walks has been supporting our community with learning how to do community walk audits, biking assessments, helping gather what's called qualitative data, which is how the community feels about where they live, where they work and play in Altadena that can hopefully lead to some really, you know, great, you know, safer streets and livable communities, we'll call it. Anyway, so those are the upcoming events. Active transportation, walking, and thinking about Clean Air Day. And then the last one, it's not really a Safe Streets project, but it's a Census Track slash Loma Alta Park project, which is giving community feedback for safety around Loma Alta Park, the Crossing at Sunset Ridge, and sort of the future of that area. And I believe the goal is that Public Works will be making a presentation at our August meeting. Town Council meeting is the goal. So the link is on the website, but I will put a particular post out there if anybody wants to make comments. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to our action item. Dish Wireless. Diane, you want to take over?
Yes.
Councilmember Markison.
Yes. Hi, Patrick. And you can go off mute now, Patrick. So, yeah, so we have Patrick here who's representing Dish Wireless. He did, we did a presentation at the Land Use Committee. The Land Use Committee is recommending approval of this project without conditions. The project is, the high level of the project is to upgrade some equipment and renew an existing CUP. Alan and Madeline visited 50 businesses and residences and left flyers for multiple people to, if they wanted to make public comment, they could send to him and/or to Madeline at the time. They received one public comment, which I'll read at the end during the public comment for this. All of the other people they had were in, I'm sorry, were in support of the project and did not have any negative comments. And for those of you that saw this in, at our meeting two weeks ago, you saw that the, most people don't even know that the cell equipment is there. So Patrick, if you could do a quick sort of recap of showing us what the building looks like and where the, you know, all of that, that'd be really helpful.
Okay, let me see. Shoot, I just lost it there for a second. Can I get access to to the, am I able to share screen right now?
You should be able to.
I think you should be able to.
Okay. I'm just having some issues with that. Shoot, I can't do it. Let me double check.
Altadena Media said you should be able to.
All right. Okay, I think I got it now. Sorry about that. Let me see. So this is located, is that the Chase Building? Can you see that screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so all we're doing is, it's, it's, there's no change. There's, the screening's already there. We're just taking over the existing screen and using it, so nothing's going to be changed in terms of the actual aesthetics. And let me double check, see what else. Give you a couple of other views as well. Most people actually don't even know that there's anything wireless related there. So that's the basics of it.
And one of the questions that came up during the Land Use Committee meeting was about whether there was going to be basically noise from any backup generators, and your answer was?
The noise, there's going to be no generators at the site.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Patrick on the project? I know many of you were already in the previous. Okay, I will. Now, of course, I just, okay, hang on. Yeah. And I had that email up, and then when Patrick couldn't find his thing, I was trying to see if I could find the presentation. Hang on. Here. Okay, we did get one email that was from Antonella Vigarito, and she says, "I'm writing in regards to the 5G dish network extension. I am against the 5G extension. I bought a property in Altadena three years ago because it is a residential area close to nature with less pollution, less sounds, and less technology. I can see Chase Bank from my place, and I do not want this upgrade. Let them place the 5G in an area where no one lives there. We have done great so far with the technology we have. I don't believe in more. I believe we actually need to go back and use less technology. Please keep me updated about the outcome of this," which we will do. Okay. That was the, that was the one public comment. So I'm sorry, I, Patrick, if you will quit sharing, actually, then I can see if anybody has any questions. Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Can we get a motion in a second?
In the matter of- Give me a minute. Give me 30 seconds. Holy. In the, in the matter of the project, LALAX 04418B, located at 2333 North Lake Avenue to extend the CUP for wireless network equipment, I move that the Algen Town Council recommends the Department of Regional Planning approval of the project without conditions.
A second. Are there any questions? I see no questions. So all those in favor? All those opposed? Sustaining? Motion carries.
Okay, and I will take care of the letter going down to regional planning since-
Okay.
The folks in the Census Track are not around. Okay. Thank you, Patrick, very much. I'll be in touch.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to the bylaws, and that's Diane Markison and Doug Cauliflower.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and get it started. Diane and I agreed to look at the bylaws as a result, or this came up from the retreat that we had in February. We got some suggestions and some comments from the executive board. But in the end, we, we really had just a few recommendations that, that everybody should. Chair Jones distributed a very succinct summary yesterday, so hopefully everybody got that. And I'll just, very briefly, we have, we are making a change at recommending that the Election Committee Chairperson be a council member. And then there were three paragraphs where we've just extended the timeframe for the elections, and that was feedback that we got from last year's election committee, that they just said those timeframes ought to be broadened a little bit. And then lastly, we just clarified that the results need to be, once the votes are tallied, that the results need to be communicated to the chair and the candidates immediately. The previous verbiage was vague and, and not specific. So that is the gist of our recommendations. And so just briefly, if anybody has any questions or I can clarify anything more, I'd be happy to do that. But those, those are the gist of the recommendations that we're making to the bylaws at this time.
Can I have a motion?
I move that we recommend changing the bylaws as outlined in the description sent out to the the Town Council the other day, and that Doug just explained.
I second the motion.
All those opposed?
How about, how about four?
All those. Okay, four.
Hi.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay, any extensions? Okay, motion carried. Okay, well, you can't say I don't make you laugh, so that's good.
No, we can't say that, no.
Okay, we're going to move on to 7.4, our Communications Committee Chair, Nick Arndsen.
I just wanted to let the council know that I sent out an email today that included the elements to our welcome package. This is the stage where I need your input and approval. If you have a chance to look at it and get back to me, that'd be great. Thank you, everybody.
It was a great package. I liked it. So, yeah, so, okay, any questions to Nick? No? Okay, then we're moving on to our Census Track report. We have 4601. I think that's Amy.
It's actually both Amy and I, and I'm going to go first, and then Amy will go second. Let me just check the chat really quickly to make sure. Oh, she says, "Thank you, Nick." Amy says, "Thank you, Nick." Okay, I just wanted to make the community aware that the Mount Lowe median, which is a very large, grassy median off of, located off of Mount Curve in Maiden Lane, has been reopened after extensive work to improve water runoff, to improve irrigation, to protect the many trees that are on the median, to install walkways, boulders, native plants, and grasses. None of this would have been possible but for the residents who live around the median, the generosity of Supervisor Barker, the advocacy and support of Senior Field Deputy Susie Neemer, and the dedication, cooperation, and execution of the LA County Department of Public Works. So thanking all of them, and it really is beautiful to see this green space in the community. Amy?
Thank you. So I'm updating everyone on the request that I had made to the Enforcement Section of Regional Planning regarding a large fence with razor wire at Glen Allen in northeast Altadena. Jose Rubio, who's the Senior Regional Planner for the Enforcement Section, wrote to me on July 6, and I'll just read you what he wrote. "The research done for this case indicates the access to the trail is in private property, and the fence installed is not subject to the Altadena CSD. Unfortunately, this access to the Altadena Crest Trail is completely in private property, and the property owner has decided to close it. The closure is now indicated by the signs posted by the Department of Public Works at the beginning of the private driveway as well as at the other side of the trail. This private driveway is only for the use of the property owners who share the easement to access their living units." He notes at the end of his communication that "the inspection concluded indicates that the fence was installed away from any rear, side, or front setbacks, therefore is exempt from any height limitations or materials. So unfortunately, although many residents were concerned about the building of this fence, which is topped with razor wire, at the access to Altadena Crest Trail, there is not much we can do about it, and I'm, I'm sorry to have to inform the community that there is nothing more that we can do about this matter. Thanks."
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. Okay, we're moving on to 4603.01.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I'm just going to rattle off a couple of things that happened that happened in our community or our Census Track that will also be happening in other Census Tracks. So one, over this past week, SCE did a power pole replacement in the Upper Elzada Jackson Circuit of Cheney Trail. It's the Wapello and the George Circuits. And while it was a lot of work, it also included insulated cover conductor wire associated with all of those poles. So fortunately, in our Census Track, we've had some work done in the Meadows area and a good chunk of insulated covered conductor in the Cheney Trail Leilani Circuit as well. So let's keep that movement going. And speaking of which, I know it's the end of this meeting, but this is an important workshop, all of the fire-prone Census Tracks. So I want our Census Track to know that on August 17, from 5:30 to 6:30, the county is taking community input on the countywide community fire protection plan, and that's an update of the general plan. So it's a really exciting time in an odd sort of way because ultimately, the more we're engaged and the more input we have, we have more potential to actually sort of formulate a wildfire protection plan for Altadena. So get involved. I'll share the link, but it's basically, right now it's listed under planning.lacounty.gov, and it's climate CCWPP, and I'll put that on the website. So Altidinos, get involved.
Thank you. Okay, Victoria Knapp, did I see you? No, no. Okay. All right. Now, number nine, adjournment. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Somebody wants to go.
So move.
I'll second that, Dr. Thomas.
All right. So thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
9:10. The time is 9:10. Thank you. All right.